For the recess Housing and Land Use Committee meeting of June 9, 2025 come to order. It is now 9:04 a.m. on July 2, 2025. I'm Tasha Kama, Chair of the Housing and Land Use Committee. This online meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Members, when your name is called, if you are not with me in the council chamber, please identify by name who, if anyone, is in your workspace with you today. And minors do not need to be identified. I'd like to say, Aloha Kakahiyaka, two. Let's go to Chair Lee for our morning greeting.
Thank you. So Chair, if you're planning to go to Hong Kong this long weekend, and you want to pretend like you know the language, you can tell everybody Ni-hao.
Ni-hao. Ni-hao to you Chair Lee and Aloha Kakahiyaka.
Thank you.
So we're going to go to say Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao to our committee vice chair, Nohe Uu Haudens.
Aloha Chair, aloha everyone.
And we're going to go to our council vice chair and say Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao to Yuki Le Suguimura.
Ni-hao Chair, and so exciting to see this ray of all these professionals from administration who are going to be with us today. I look forward to that. And happy birthday, Kate Blystone, Planning Director.
Doesn't make you want to just sing happy birthday?
Okay, let's do it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Kate. Happy birthday to you. And yeah, we keep going backwards. Want to say Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao to our council member Gabe Johnson.
Ni-hao, aloha and good morning Chair, council members, community members. There's no testifiers at the Lanai District Office. I'm with my wet dog on, and my side of the office is pouring down rain here on Lanai. So, but I'm here and ready to work. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you. And we're going to say Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao to our council member, Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Aloha Kakahiyaka Chair. Mahalo for starting us off with that neli. And happy 29th birthday again, Director Blystone. I'm happy to be here in person. Mahalo.
Thank you. Want to say Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao to our council member Tom Cook.
Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao Chair. Looking forward to today, this very, very important discussion with our administration. Looking forward to a constructive meeting. There's currently no testifiers, well, we don't have testifiers, but the key regional office is open.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shane Sinensi is excused, attending a funeral this morning. And I see councilmember Tamara Paulton is in the chamber this morning. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. Kako kalamai antipariho olava ki yala.
And we have from the county administration, from the office of the mayor, Laxmi Abraham, the Director of Communications and Government Affairs, Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. And we have from also the office of the mayor, Matt Tokowski, the Executive Assistant. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. And also we have from the Department of Planning, our newly 29-year-old Kate Blystone, Director. And we have with her from the Administrative Planning Office, Greg Post, Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. And we have with us from the Department of Housing, Richard Mitchell, the Director. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Good morning Chair and members.
And so we have from the Department of Finance, the Deputy Director Maria Zalinski. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Good morning.
And we have with us from the Department of Corporation Counsel, the deputies Karen Tarnstrom, Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. And we have also Nahulu Nunakawa, Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. And we have with us from the Department of Water Supply, the Deputy Director, who's available online, Mr. James Kimo Landgraf. Kimo, are you online with us now? Okay.
Chair, he might not be on currently, but he is available on call if needed.
Okay, thank you. We have our committee staff, our senior analyst, James Krueger. Aloha Kakahiyaka, James and Ni-hao.
Good morning Chair and members.
And we have our legislative analyst, Ellen McKinley. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Good morning Chair and members.
We have our committee secretary, Jennifer Yamashita. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Good morning Chair and members.
And we have our legislative attorney, Carla Nakata. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Aloha Chair and members.
And we have our assistant clerk, who's taking testimonies out in the lobby, Lee Dineen. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao. So thank you, members, for attending today's HLU committee meeting. We have a single agenda on today's agenda. It's Bill 9, amending chapters 19.12, 19.32, and 19.37 of the Maui County Code relating to transit vacation rentals in apartment districts. We are scheduled to meet today until 4:30 this evening. During the reconvene meeting held on June 25, we close oral testimony, but we will continue to keep, to accept written testimony into the record. I'm planning to recess this meeting for one mid-morning break around 10:20 a.m. for 15 minutes. I suspect, subject to your approval, that we will probably reconvene in some executive session. And I'm hoping that we can conclude that executive session before lunch around noon today. But after lunch, I'm hoping that we can get into Bill 9 and consider any amendments members would like to consider. My goal is to make a recommendation to the council on Bill 9 by the end of today. But I also understand that if this committee would like to take longer with this bill, I hope that by providing information now, that members and the public are better informed as to how I will be managing our meeting time. I ask for your full cooperation and participation. So at this time, members, I'll be calling on you for the questions that you have for the administration and our invited guests. But before we get into those questions, we need to formally recognize our invited guests as resources based on their expertise regarding the matter before us. So if there are no objections, I would like to designate the following as resource persons under Rule 18A of the Rules of the Council as follows. Caitlin Miller, the Executive Director of Maui Vacation Rental Association. Ms. Miller possesses expertise on transit vacation rental properties. From Lahaina Strong, Jordan Ruizas, Lead Organizer and Founder, and Lauren Regal, Strategic Advisor and Manager. Ms. Ruizas and Ms. Regal possess expertise relating to the research conducted by Lahaina Strong on Minnetoka list properties. When we last met, they submitted a report with Lahaina Strong's research. Cara Beltran, a mortgage loan originator with Security National Mortgage Company. Ms. Beltran possesses expertise on assisting potential home buyers with purchasing a home. And Donna Ting, Real Estate Broker and President of Tri Isle Realty and Development Company. Ms. Ting possesses expertise on real property management, including rentals, as well as real estate expertise. If there are no objections, members, I'd like to continue.
No objections.
Thank you, members. So members, now is the time to ask questions. I will start with my committee vice chair, Uu Haudens, followed by council chair Lee, council vice chair Suguimura, and then continue for members in your seating order. Yes, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair. To clarify, the questions that you're asking for are questions for the admin team, for the additional resources, or for everyone. So we're going to state our questions for the record and then, but we won't have them answered at this time.
It is, no, you want them to answer it, right?
Oh, well, my preference would be to go into executive session first so that some of the questions that have already been stated at the last meeting can be answered in closed session so that we understand the legality. Because there were some things that were stated in testimony.
Yeah.
And, you know, when we were considering whether we would do some deliberation before today, Member Uu Haudens suggested going into executive session. And I heard a couple of Member Suguimura's questions that she immediately proposed, and those were also legal questions. So if possible, I would really like to go into executive session first.
Okay. Members, is that your choosing? Because if it is, we could, unless there's a reason why we could not, Mr. Nahulu or Ms. Tarnstrom?
I'm all right going into executive session, Chair.
Member Lee.
Thank you Chair. I don't mind going in first, but I can foresee possibly going in again because we're, we have all the administration representatives, and we're supposed to learn from their answers. So, you know, we're still formulating our opinions, and maybe some of our questions will be answered. Maybe some of our questions will, you know, trigger more questions for executive session. But I have no problem going into executive session first, knowing that we may go in again. Thank you.
Oh, I want to, before we continue, I'd like to welcome Member Shane Sinensi. Aloha Kakahiyaka and Ni-hao.
Aloha Kakahiyaka Chair and Li-hao.
Thanks for joining us. Member Uu Haudens.
Thank you Chair. I'm happy to go into executive session as well now that we have all our members here. I know in the beginning, we were thinking we were going to be down two, so we were going to wait until we had everyone present. But now that we do, I'm happy to go into executive session to discuss some of the legalities about this bill. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments, members? Okay, so.
Mahalo Chair for considering that.
Okay. So let me get to the executive session notes.
You want, you want me to make a motion?
No, I'm, the Chair will entertain a motion to convene in executive session in accordance with, got to read all of this stuff, Section 92-5, Parent A, Parent 4, Hawaii Revised Statutes to consult with legal counsel on questions and issues pertaining to the powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities of the county, the council, and the committee. An affirmative vote of two-thirds of the voting members present, provided the affirmative vote constitutes the majority of the members to which the board is entitled, is needed to convene. So, thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion made by Member Uu Haudens and a second by Member Rollins Fernandez to enter into executive session for Bill 9, 2025. Any further discussion? Yeah.
Are we gonna, who are we gonna have in our executive session? Are we going to have our resources? Are we going to have admin? Or are we going to only have court counsel? Can, what, what are we gonna?
That's a good question. I was asking that this morning. Nahulu, please.
I think for this initial executive session, it would just be the attorneys along with the council members, unless something comes up later that any of the resources are necessary. It would just be us explaining legality to the council members.
Sounds good. Thank you so much Chair.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Aye. But I did have a comment. I just, I just wanted to apologize to everyone in the gallery and, you know, to our resource folks for going into closed session immediately. But mahalo for everyone's understanding.
Okay. Well, thank you for the second thing that apology on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Mahalo Chair.
Okay. So we took, okay, I'm going to do this again. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. Member, okay, there you are. Okay, 9-0 is the vote. Thank you. So for the record, the following personnel will be attending the executive session meeting. All of the council members in attendance. Myself is committee chair Tasha Kama, committee vice chair Nohe Lani Uu Haudens, council member Tom Cook, council member Gabe Johnson, council chair Alice Lee, council member Tamara Paulton, council member Kiani Rollins Fernandez, council member Shane Sinensi, council member Yuki Le Suguimura. Office of the Council Services staff. Do we need, we need staff in there, right? Carla Nakata, our legislative attorney, and Jennifer Yamashita, committee secretary. So court counsel, can I ask you to state from the Department of Court Counsel or administration who will be in exec sessions with us and your titles?
I will be attending Nahulu Nunakawa, Deputy Corporation Counsel. And Kristen Tarnstrom will also be attending, also Deputy Corporation Counsel.
Okay. Very good. So at this time, the Chair would like to call for recess so that we can go into exec session. We'll reconvene in 15 minutes. Is that good enough or too much? Sounds like a long time. Yep. Member Paulton.
Five minutes, because we can always be late. Oh yeah, we all can be early.
Okay, it's just clearing out the room, right?
Right.
Okay. Five minutes, okay. Sorry, guys, we have to kick you out. Can you please start leaving now? Yeah. So we're going to reconvene at 9:25 in exec session. The recessed HLU meeting of June 9 will now reconvene. It is now 3:43 p.m.
What time?
3:43 p.m. So members, we have just completed our executive meeting on Bill 9. And so at this time, I'd like to ask our Carla to provide the summary in accordance with the HR Statute, Section 92-4.
Thank you Chair. The committee convened an executive meeting under Section 92-5A4, Hawaii Revised Statutes to consult with legal counsel on the rights and liabilities of the county, the council, and the committee. The committee discussed Bill 9, 2025, its scope, and legal issues relating to the proposed phase-out with the Department of the Corporation Counsel. Nothing further, Chair.
Thank you. So members, the mayor's team are all getting gathered on, online. So while we wait for them to all gather and when, when they are, when they are all on, can staff let me know. But in the meantime, members, we are more than likely to recess this meeting to July 23. So I would like to, at this time, through Rule 14 of the Rules of the Council, that that rule limits the recess meetings to more than 14 days after the prior meeting. So more than 14 days after July 9 takes us at the 23rd. So July 23 is the 21st day after today. So I, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend Rule 14 of the Rules of the Council so we can recess to Ju, July 23 as the appropriate time. So move. It's been moved by Vice Chair Suguimura, and seconded by Tom Cook. Thank you, Tom. So please note that we need an affirmative vote from two-thirds of the committee to approve the rule suspension. All those in favor of the rule suspension, please say aye or raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, what rule are we suspending?
Rule 14, to extend from 21 days to the 23rd, which gives us more time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Sure.
I think it's important to note that majority of this council is going to go to NACO next week, and so we won't have committee, and that is your next scheduled HLU meeting. So that is the next time we have this committee, which is why we're doing it. But I just wanted to state that for the record.
That's why. Any other discussion, members? Yes, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair. I'm hoping we'll be able to come to a decision on the 23rd. I know there's a lot of things that we're all juggling, but in talking with my staff, I'm willing to not have my committee meeting the next day in case we aren't able to complete and vote on the 23rd. So I can, I can hold that day open for recess meeting if we need to.
Well, that, we could have, I appreciate that.
The day that we're going to have the public hearing, the 24th, my committee meeting. Yeah, yeah, we're not going to do it, but since we're not going to do it, it's now.
Open.
Potentially open, so that we can complete our work if we're not able to on the 23rd. Because I would like to complete it as, as soon as possible. And I'm, I'm happy to, you know, be part of the team and provide more time if, if more time is needed.
Okay. Member Uu Haudens.
Thank you Chair. And check with my great committee staff. But considering what Member Rollins Fernandez said, all of you folks are in the great committee. I don't know what we have scheduled on the 22nd, except for perhaps the 7B that I requested the other day with boards and commissions. And again, because everybody's in that committee, just like this one, you guys should all have it available. I can ask if, if we have anything pressing for time with court counsel, and you can have that time as well.
We'll have to poll our members for that day too.
Okay. That'll be on the afternoon of the 22nd. Yeah.
And Member Rollins, you're in all day, right?
Okay, correct, on the 24th.
Yes. Okay.
A public hearing, yeah.
Okay, so members, does that sound like something doable? But we'll do the poll for the 22nd. And so would that be, Member Uu Haudens? That would be your afternoon, right?
Yes.
Okay. I have morning, so if you need the morning, you know, let me know. Okay. So thank you. Okay, so, remember, Suguimura offered her morning of the 22nd. So we might poll for all day 22, and then of course, 23 for sure. And then if we need the roll over to the 24th, we'll do that. Okay? So just know you'll get the poll coming out. If it's okay with Chair Lee to poll. Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll, I'll send the poll out. Yeah, poll.
On the suspension of Rule 14.
Oh, okay.
When discussion is complete.
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay, so all those in favor of suspending Rule 14, raise your hands, say aye. Aye. Okay. I see nine ayes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being there. What about you tomorrow? So we have nine ayes, zero noes, motion's carried. So the rules are suspended. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm not sure who's online. Can we, James?
Chair, yes, we see Ms. Abraham from the mayor's office. She's joined online, and we've made her present her.
Okay.
We're on the lookout for other individuals to join us.
Okay. So Lax is definitely online. And we'll start, like I said earlier this morning, with the vice chair, and then we'll go down the row from Chair, Vice Chair, Member Paulton, Member Johnson, and then down this way.
Thank you Chair. I'm wondering if we have Department of Planning and Director Kate Blystone on? And if so, can we ask her to please give, give us some answers from the Planning Commission, all three of them? They had really good questions that we obviously couldn't discuss in executive session. But there are a couple of good questions from the Planning Commission. And then if she is on, I would like to discuss some of the things that I asked that we needed to discuss in open session during executive session as well.
Okay. So is Planning on, James? It's her birthday.
Chair, currently, we don't see an individual from the Planning Department online at this moment. Perhaps, I'm not sure if maybe they've gathered in the mayor's office. Maybe Ms. Abraham might be able to confirm if someone's joining.
Yeah, let's ask Lax.
Chair?
Yes.
While we're figuring that out, I just, I did get an opportunity to speak with Planning while we're on our recess, and they informed me that some of the questions that we transmitted to them, they have responded and transmitted back to us. And I see.
Some Granicus?
Oh, I don't know. We have to ask staff if it's posted.
86.
Granicus number 86, okay. Mahalo.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Post from the Department of Planning has joined us.
Okay. Member Uu Haudens, would you just like to speak to Mr. Post?
Sure, thank you Chair. I'll look for their response later. But I was just wondering, Mr. Post, if you could answer some of the questions that were asked by the Planning Commissions. I guess Maui Planning Commission discussed some of the properties that have hotel zoning as well. And I'm wondering if you could tell us how to navigate that in looking at some of the Minnetoka list. We have a few that are zoned A1, business resort, open space, and planned project district. What is that, what does that mean? How do we navigate through the four different designations of zoning?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I mean, there's different ways. I mean, in the zoning, you can go to Title 19, and it'll describe the zoning designation. So in, if I remember on that list, the, I think it was hotels. So you can go to the hotel zoning designation under the Title 19. For the community plans, you have to go into the separate community plans and look at whatever description is defined within the community plan for that typical or that defined land use. I think there were only five on the Minnetoka list that had multiple or had zoning designations that represented some sort of resort or hotel destination, either in community plan or zoning designation. Does that help?
It does, except in deciding, well, one of the questions that Maui Planning Commission asked, where did it go? Was that they requested for us to consider excluding those properties that are community plan designated for hotel use and those properties that are already partially hotel zoned. How do we figure out what version of zoning outweighs another, especially when there's four different zonings, and they don't necessarily line up? Where do we associate the most weight with what zoning?
That's a good question. I'm not sure you can assign a weight. I mean, it's really the, it's either hotel or resort, offers hotel type use. So I'm not sure if you can assign a weight, which is better or not. I think the point, and I think in recent correspondence that the department provided in Granicus, addressing this particular issue, is that it's really, the hard part about the Minnetoka list is, one, I think we've explained it, and within that correspondence, that it's not entirely accurate as far as zoning designations. And so although the Planning Commission, you're right, did recommend it, maybe some of these properties can be excluded, what the department would recommend is that those properties actually go through a code amendment process so that we can actually go through and dive in in more detail to determine whether or not these were actually, I mean, there's some history on these properties, right? On whether or not they actually acted as resort hotels at one time or not. And reliant simply on the zoning designation, I'm not sure if that's the best way to go about doing as far as, we'd recommend that they go through actually a process in order to kind of do a more deeper dive.
Thank you Chair. Oh, thank you, Mr. Post. I'm not too sure if there's a time limit. I haven't heard a bell, but I just want to make sure that I'm respecting my colleagues' time as well. James, do I have a time limit? No, that's okay.
Chair, we've been timing, we put a five-minute timer up. There's one minute and 20 seconds about left on the timer.
Okay, good, I have one minute and 20 seconds left. Because we're going to use up all our time. I'll, I'll hold then, I'll yield to my colleagues. Thank you Chair. Because we're gonna use up all our time, I'll, I'll hold then, I'll yield to my colleagues, thank you Chair.
Thank you, um, I'm, think this would be for Lox, but Mr. Post. Planning, Planning, I guess would be fine. We received um, an anonymous email regarding, uh, I suppose, a conversation back and forth uh, with the mayor and various staff people, Planning Department people, regarding uh, seemingly a discussion on uh, possibly changing the number uh, of STRs to be affected by this ordinance. Who would like to take that? Question? Nobody, oh, hi.
Um.
Hi Anna.
Hello, uh, hello, Anna Lilis, Deputy for Plan.
Okay, so Anna, you recall that?
Chair.
You recall that?
Um, n- not by the description, but I'm sure that if I was provided a record or more of a reference.
I can, I can send you a copy, but you're on that thread, email, and I, and I guess the conversation was to ask whether or not um, the number should be reduced to two thousand STR units, you recall that? And so, I was wondering, what was the basis for that conversation?
Um, so we went through many rounds of different discussions um, regarding this issue, uh, analyzing it from multiple perspectives, and so, um, you know, the proposal, uh, what we are standing on is before you today, so um, I can certainly speak to a more direct question, Chair.
Okay, another possible question would be, when you were discussing that topic, were you at one time thinking, I was just focusing on West Maui STRs? Because that runs about two thousand or so units? If you don't know, that's okay.
Yes, I, I truly, um, like I said, we, we discussed the both districts, um, you know, the bill comprehensively, uh, between South Maui, West Maui, because those have, of course, the most uh, for this bill, but um, I was not sure.
It triggered my curiosity, because I, I believe that, that conversation or that discussion took place after you folks proposed, uh, submitted your proposal, your initial proposal. Okay, if you don't have the answer to that, I will send it to you, and maybe you can respond after you receive my email, okay? Thank you.
Greatly appreciated, Chair, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Member Sugimura?
Yeah, um, so also the Planning Commission, um, what happened to Anna Lilis? Um, Deputy Director Lilis also recommended that some properties um, were um, designated, where they have hotel or mixed, mixed use, so. The properties that were in, in your May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five letter to HLU Chair states that five properties have zoning and/or community plan designations, that in addition to their apartment zoning designation, also includes another designation that would allow hotel-type uses, and is Wailea Ekahi One, Wailea Ekahi Three, Papakea, Halekanapali, and Maui Eldorado, um, were the five properties that the Maui Planning Commission recommended the council consider excluding these properties from the proposed bill.
Yes, correct, and so I'll just wanna point out that Granicus item number eighty-six has our correspondence from Planning that we did transmit this morning, and we do speak uh, more in detail uh, to that element of the uh, Planning Department's recommendation, and essentially, we feel as though it should go through the public process, um, but that council could prioritize review of initiating those entitlements.
So what do you mean by public process? It should go through?
Oh, the pub. Yes, so that you're, thank you, thank you council members, so essentially, those properties could be council, if this bill is passed, could be initiated by council to uh, update their land use entitlements to continue the TBR use, and that can be done within Bill Nine, um, certainly, but we would want corp councils to weigh in on that, uh, but essentially, we feel as though the best directive for this bill is to fully phase out transification rentals in the apartment district to make it long-term use only, and then take a finer look at the properties that should be reviewed on an individual basis through the existing process, uh, through the change in zoning and community plan amendments, on top of any other land use entitlements that might be required.
Thank you, um, so that public process then would be a separate process to do a um, change of zoning for these individual properties that we mentioned? But the bill should stand as is, and then um, whoever council initiated or whatever, um, to change zoning for these? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, thank you very much, that's exactly it.
Okay, thank you.
Member Paulton?
Um, I think my question might be for Finance, is Finance on?
Nope, only Mr. Chakowski and Ms. Blystone, right James?
Or, okay, I'll, I'll ask Ms. Lilis then, um. Wh- what are reasons that the Planning Department would support a change in zoning? Like, if there are already community planned hotel, would that be a sufficient reason?
That would indicate the community's intent, uh, that would certainly uh, be a weighted criteria, I would say, for the department's consideration, uh, if you look at the change in zoning criteria, a lot of it is also related to detrimental use, and looking at the other surrounding properties, and uh, so we, we would look at the compliance for Title nineteen for change in zoning criteria, but that would certainly be a weighted uh, element for sure.
And would the county, um, I mean, I know council can initiate change in zoning, but can the administration also initiate change in zoning?
Yes, absolutely, so the charter does provide that the Planning Director does have the authority to initiate changes in zoning, and uh, general land use entitlements as well.
And so, um. Has the, have you um, gone through any criteria, like, I mean, for me, I wouldn't wanna step in if not one hundred percent of the owners are on board, for sure. Is that something that you guys have talked about at all?
We've not talked about um, consultation of the relative HOAs that exist on these properties, but that would certainly um, be part of a reasonable approach to the administration, looking at initiating ourselves, land use entitlements for these properties, is engaging the constituents that live there, absolute, or own there.
Cause um, I, I remember previously, Member King had tried to do something, but not all the owners were in agreement, and so we kind of just stepped back from that, which I thought was smart, but um, the administration hasn't stated any policy as to all the owners have to be on board on one side or another.
Yes, and I, I don't think we've looked at that specific issue, council member, but I would say that um, our priority right now is to pass this bill and return the apartment district to long-term use, and any sort of consideration of properties afterwards, we're looking more so at fixing the permitting process to move these applications, um, that we presume will pa- will come out from this, and so um, that's where we're at, at this stage.
Um, my last question is, if you had um, a single-family home on apartment, oh, I guess I'll come back. I'll, I'll call you after, later on.
Member Johnson?
Thank you Chair, all my questions have been answered this time, thank.
Thank you, member Rollins Fernandez?
I'm happy to yield to my colleague to my right. Since you have questions, I don't have, I don't have questions for today.
Thank you. Member Cook?
Thank you Chair, my question would be for the Deputy Director for Planning, Ms. Lilis. What's the difference, could you explain the difference be- uh, between a council or administrative-initiated change in zoning, and an owner-initiated change of zoning?
Ah, wonderful question, Councilmember Cook, so for those three categories, um, I'll start with um, what the charter provides. So the charter provides that both the Planning Director and the County Council can initiate changes in zoning. And so we, we work with our partners at the wonderful Department of Corporation Council to draft that legislation and assign that to a planner, to take it through the Planning Commission, uh, the rel- the respective Planning Commission. And the council-initiated changes in zoning are more inter- or I should say land use entitlements. Um, so council-initiated land use entitlements have a special charter provision that if, the, once, once council pa- passes a resolution to send a bill for change in zoning, let's, for example, to the Planning Commissions, that we ha- we, Planning Department, have a hundred and twenty days to take that through the Planning Commission, and if we, if a hundred and twenty-one days are hit, then council can take up the matter of itself without the Planning Commission's recommendation, and if two-thirds vote are had, it can cha- it can move on that ordinance, it can give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down, make amendments, and so that's um, a difference between the two processes, as our process, if it, if we pl- Planning Director or does not, if our Planning Director does not um, move on a hundred and twenty days, there's no auto council approval, so that's a difference there, is ours has to go through and get a Planning Commission recommendation, and so.
To clarify, it's not a hundred and twenty days from when it passes, it's a hundred and twenty days from when they receive it, cause we got into that issue.
Yes, so we do need to receive the, the resolution, yes, that's provided in the charter.
So, could you walk me through briefly the steps? When, when it gets transmitted to the Planning Commission, and then A, B, C, D, E, F? What, what has to happen in order for it, the zoning to change?
Oh yes, so um, I can, I can certainly go into those details, but I wanna get to your actual question, which I feel as though, so they, they look at our staff report, we walk them through the prescriptive criteria in Title nineteen, and essentially, they just make a recommendation based off of um, their analysis, and so that recommendation is captured in a summary staff report, and we do the minutes and we transmit that to council, and so um, that can take multiple meetings, um, and so that's what the Planning Commission does, is they review the application along, you know, our dedicated staff, and they make a recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all, member the questions for now.
Thank you.
And I didn't, I didn't get to the application side, but the app, the applicant also does not have a trigger of a hundred and twenty days, but they need to themselves create their application and pack it, and it follows a similar process.
I'm sure there's a lot to it, and I'll get to it, thank you, thank you very much, Chair.
Member Sinancy?
Thank you Chair, did you say that Ms. Abraham was on? Oh, okay. Mahalo Ms. Abraham, um, it looks like during testimony, we received some testimony in support of Bill Nine, however, with some recommendations, um, I guess follow-ups to, to the bill, should it pass? Um, does the administration anticipate proposing um, any additional bills, companion bills in response to some of these recommendations?
Uh, thank you member, currently, the administration sits on the language that is presented in the bill in its current form, um, based on the amendments that we presented. However, we do acknowledge that there will likely be next steps that will need to be um, done in unison with this bill, but at a later time, and um, you know, as we mentioned in our presentation, those other steps would include potential um, tax amendments, um, to offset revenue losses, uh, but th- those are the, that's the main, um, those are the main things that we've, we've discussed so far.
Okay, and.
Is the offset in revenue.
For now, okay, and then.
So yes, there, there will be some follow-up steps, but that would have to be discussed with council at a later time.
Right, I believe we received some, uh, recommendations from Stand Up Maui, as well as CNHA, um, for some follow-up. Okay, uh, that's it Chair, thanks for now.
Thank you, we're gonna come back on this side, Chair Lee, any questions?
Uh, yes, for, for Lox, Abraham? Lox, can you expand on the offset in revenue, uh, where are we gonna get a hundred million dollars from?
Thank you Chair for that question, um, I would defer to Finance, uh, unfortunately, our Director of Finance is on the East Coast, and she has gone to bed already, uh, however, we'd be happy to answer those questions and, and follow-up, if you could submit those questions to us.
All right.
And I apologize, we were prepared to speak to that, but um, had to let her go to sleep.
Okay, so we'll send you a letter in writing, now, my understanding is, in the mayor's presentation, and I believe you were part of it to the council initially, um, the, the key reason, it seems, for this proposed legislation is to address the issue of the lack of housing, especially for West Maui, is that correct?
I think the intention of the bill overall is to address the overall housing crisis, not just West or South Maui, but given the circumstance that most of the TBRs that are in question are located in West and South Maui, um, yes, that would, that would be the, the main area of focus.
Okay, great, so, sorry. If, if, this is uh, just a scenario, if what we're proposing, or what you're proposing, doesn't yield as many units, especially in the affordable range, um, do you have a backup plan? Are you simultaneously working on providing new permanent housing?
Uh, so the, thank you Chair for that question, the first part of that is, we do have a broader hous- housing strategy, um, the Director of Housing submitted a response to numerous questions outlining what that broader housing strategy looks like, so certainly Bill Nine is part of that broader housing strategy, um, and I'm sorry, what was the, what was the first question that you had?
What if this proposal doesn't yield the number of affordable units you're hoping it would? And because of that, because there's so much uncertainty about whether or not we're gonna actually have a lot of a- affordable housing as a result of this proposal, this legislation on STRs? I asked whether, whether or not you have a um, a, a plan, or, or what are we gonna do to provide permanent housing, and I mean, not just a plan, but like, when is it gonna start?
I think it's our position that uh, we were, we have never looked at these units as potentially affordable, we look at these units as potentially attainable and adding capacity, and moving us in the direction of adding more units to the market. Um, as far as how many units would result in this transition, the overall goal for us is to, if any amount of units that we can get to convert is considered success. Any amount of units that we can bring online, uh, for long-term housing would be a success from where we're sitting.
Can I still ask a question?
No, your time is up.
Oh, okay.
Member Sugimura?
You know, I'll, I'll wait. Let, member Paulton.
Member Paulton?
Um, I'd like to go back to Ms. Lilis. Hi, so um, my question was, if you have uh, like um, say a TMK that is zoned A1, A2, and they have either a do- a single dwelling unit, multiple dwelling units, multifamily, or a um, cottage accessory dwelling unit, but this TMK is owned by one family, they're allowed to do short-term rent. They're allowed to do short-term rental without a permit because of the A1, A2 zoning, and they may have done it prior to April twenty eighth, nineteen eighty-nine, or something like that?
That would be correct. So the Minnetoka list, that, it's not, it doesn't go based off of the structure type.
And the one that you have, the list that you have, is not necessarily exhaustive?
That is correct, and our letter does address that as well. And we are looking at proactively reviewing certain properties that have come to our attention to see if they indeed qualify.
So if that type of property is also occupied by the owner, they're still allowed to do short-term rental? And in that case, would you know that the tax classification should be commercialized residential? Or can it be owner-occupied?
Lot of different facets there, so I probably shouldn't speak to Department of Finance questions. But I do understand that commercialized residential, my understanding is that that is only for bed and breakfast permit holders. That's that, that's the only way that that classification comes up. The properties that qualify for transification rental use in the apartment district can, there's no restriction on whether they are owner-occupied, long-term rental, and their default tax classification, my understanding is, is that they go by highest and best use. And so if, if the Real Property Assessments Division doesn't have any information of them having a qualifying exemption for homeowner, long-term rental, what have you, then their default classification is the TBRSTRH tax classification.
Okay, I better dive deeper with Finance, because it seems like maybe a special situation. But like, if, if what the A1, A2 thing, Minnetoka thing says is specific to short-term rental, not to B and B, but if they're in that zoning and they have a large house and they're living in it, it kind of is the definition of B and B?
Ah, sure, sure. So if, I could see, I think I'm getting, I think I'm seeing what you're saying. That if I filed an owner-occupied tax classification, but I'm transification renting, because that's a lawful use, I believe we should confirm this with the Department of Finance, but that would inherently not make you qualify for the homeowner's exemption. But that should be confirmed with the Department of Finance. I thought, I believe that that's a caveat to that.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to follow up with them.
Thank you. You, Member Paulton? Member Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I have a couple of questions. Uh, for Ms. Abraham. Aloha, Ms. Abraham. Mahalo for being with us today. Earlier, there was a question asked about the potential loss in revenue of a hundred million dollars. I believe our Finance Director, Marcy Martin, projected sixty million, not a hundred million. Is that your understanding? And that's also assuming that the rates were to stay the same as they're set now and assessments also stayed the same. I'm just going to answer my own question, and that's the correct answer. All right, I had another question for Ms. Abraham. Okay, Ms. Abraham. Can you hear me?
Yes, member.
Oh, okay. Are you confirming what I said is correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great.
The average estimated amount is sixty million that we anticipate would be a loss in RPT revenue. And that's in line, in alignment with what UHERO has estimated as well.
Okay, mahalo for that. And then to an earlier question. What I understood from Mayor and his team's comments was that the purpose of Bill Nine wasn't just about housing, although it is a big part of it. It is also about water, taking up a larger percentage of water, preventing housing elsewhere being built, as well as correcting zoning. But it's also about restoring community. And we heard that a lot in testimony, that where there once was community, there no longer is. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, member, that is absolutely correct and in line with what we presented.
Mahalo, Ms. Abraham. Mahalo, Chair.
Um, thank you, Ms. Rollins Fernandez. So, Member Cook, any last questions?
Uh, nope, it's late and there'll be another day for questions. Thank you, Chair.
Member Wu Hodgens?
Chair, can I just confirm with you that whenever we come back, whether it be the twenty-second or the twenty-third is guaranteed, maybe the twenty-second, maybe the twenty-fourth, that we're going to have all the other resources that were announced at the beginning of this meeting to ask questions to?
Well, we're going to have to re-invite them.
Okay, we'll re-invite them.
So I'm thinking that our resources that we invited, the council invited, I assume that they're going to show, because they were here today and they want to speak, I'm sure. I'm sure that they will be here. In terms of the mayor's team, we'll just have to re-invite them again and then.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. One of my questions is going to be to a banker. As I understand it, properties under litigation, when it comes to lending, have strict criteria, and it's very difficult to get a loan on property that's under litigation. And I wanted their perspective. Most people I know don't have a few extra hundred thousand dollars in cash laying around to buy one of these potential units, whether it's now or in a few years. And so I wanted their perspective and what we can do to ensure that the potential properties stay locally. But I'll save that question for when we come back, but that's an important question for me. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Member Sanancy?
No more questions, Chair.
Thank you. So members, we are definitely going to recess today's HLU meeting.
Point of order, Chair.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I want to make a correction. As Lox mentioned, the sixty million was for RPT, real property taxes. I was including TAT, Trans residence accommodation taxes, and GET, general excise taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so we're definitely going to return on the twenty-third at nine AM to the same place, to the same station at nine o'clock in the morning. And I just want to ask all of you. My staff just told me I'm not available on the twenty-second. I would love that. So we're going to pull for the twenty-fourth. So is everybody okay on the twenty-fourth? Which is usually Keanu's day, the whole day. Are you all good for the twenty-fourth?
I'm not using the second half of tomorrow if anyone wanted to.
So twenty-fourth, are we good? All day, all day?
I don't know if you, Chair, I don't know if you heard, Member Paulton?
I, I took tomorrow's slot, but I won't be using the whole day if you guys wanted to go a half-day tomorrow.
But I have another meeting tomorrow, too.
Okay, never mind then. Twenty-fourth is fine with me.
Twenty-fourth is good? Twenty-fourth good?
Twenty, Chair, twenty, twenty-third?
Twenty-three and?
And twenty-fourth, potentially. If we don't complete our work on the twenty-third, then we would recess to the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth good, Mrs. Nancy? Ms. Hodgens? Mr. Cook? Is the twenty-fourth okay for you? Um, Chair? Vice Chair? Member Paulton? Okay, so we're going to report back here on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth if we do not complete our work on the twenty-third. So, yes.
For, for our reconvene meeting, I didn't see OEB Department on the, can we request if they would be available to serve as a resource for us when we reconvene as well? So we'll have Planning, Mayor's Office.
Everybody else that we invited.
Housing, Finance, OEB Department, Corporation Council. Water?
Water. Yeah, we invited water.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, and then we'd have to also ask our volunteer
Yes.
resource folks, if they can, if they would be available as well. Okay. And then on that day, do you have an idea how you would format the meeting? Like who we would take up first? So, because especially because like.
So did you want to do volunteer folks? Like, you know, we bring the finance and everybody has a finance question, just ask them if they can go back. You guys want to do it like that? I was thinking about that today. Or just ask, everybody stays all day and just ask as the questions come up.
Then the questions flow. If everybody's there.
Okay, so everybody stays and we just.
My concern is more about our resource folks who aren't paid to be here.
It's what?
And our volunteer resource folks. I was just concerned about them spending the entire day again and.
I know.
Not having an, yeah, I know, I know. I know that was a concern for you, too.
Let's make sure that we ask the questions of them, then, you know? Utilize them while they're here.
I guess maybe when the committee staff reaches out to our volunteer resource folks that maybe you can report to us when we reconvene on the twenty-third, when they would be available? And then that way, we can kind of also follow their schedule.
Did you get that, James? Okay, thank you. Okay. And that's that. Is there anything else that we need to take care of?
Chair, no, that'd be all. If you want, I could just announce the, the information about the recess, if you want me to do that.
Okay, yeah.
So, so Chair, then the committee will be recessing. They'll be recessing to July twenty-third at nine o'clock AM, using the same Microsoft Teams link and connections we're using today, with the same in-person location here in the council chamber.
Yep. Ready? Okay, members, thank you for spending the whole day with us. Thank you, Ms. Nunakawa and Ms. Tomstrom, for staying with us all day for all the recesses. Thank you to all of our staff who is here from OCS. So the June ninth, HLU recess committee meeting is now in recess until July twenty-third, nine AM. Meeting now in recess. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Chair.